All right, good morning, everybody. It's Wednesday, December fourth at nine AM. Um.
Justin, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British stands, one nation, united, bound, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Of course, the fan comes on.
Okay, any, uh, any public comment? Hopefully, everybody has something to say this morning. First, we'll start within the room. Anybody out there? If not, anybody online? Okay. Uh, how about the, any changes to the consent, consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
And I'll second Brian.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and we're gonna kick it off here with Brianna Cup for the, uh, recognition of our numerous over-tenure employees. Hey Brianna, yeah.
I'll shake with two hands, one for me and one for Brian.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, today, we're going to be presenting certificates, um, for our ten to fifteen years of service employees. Um, as tenure holds great importance today, we want to express our sincere gratitude for the hard work of every county employee. Those honored today have served Cook County for ten years or more. While some ha- some are recognized for a decade, their service can range from ten to fifteen years. As a small gesture of thanks for your dedication, we have prepared a gift of appreciation. If you are present, please step forward when your name is called, and I'll read a little bit about you, um, that your coworkers or department had had to say about you. Jim Brinkley, with a total of fourteen years of service. Jim demonstrates a strong dedication to Cook County and its residents. He possesses a rich collection of stories for those keen on exploring the county's history with fourteen years of committed service. He consistently places the needs of the community at the forefront of his efforts, striving to enhance the lives of his residents. Jim's unwavering focus on community welfare drives him to approach every responsibility with the intent to create positive outcomes for the citizens he serves. Lieutenant Mitch Madden, with a total of fourteen years of service. Lieutenant Madden become a full-time deputy with the Cook County Sheriff's Office in two thousand and ten. Throughout his career, he's held various positions, including field training officer and TASER instructor, and was instrumental in establishing the K-9 program in two thousand and thirteen, working alongside his K-9 partner Jet from two thousand and fourteen until Jet's retirement in two thousand and twenty-one. He advanced to the role of criminal detective in two thousand and sixteen, then to patrol sergeant in two thousand and nineteen. In his personal time, he enjoys activities with his wife Lacy and their children, Hazen and Henley, as well as woodworking, restoring his nineteen sixty-five Ford Mustang, hunting and fishing. Thank you, Lieutenant Madden, for your service. Allison Hildebrand, with a total of thirteen years of service, has been a familiar presence at the Cook County landfill for thirteen years, working as a skill attendant. This position requires excellent organization skills, strong communication, and deep commitment to both the job and her colleagues. It also calls for resilience and a good sense of humor, as interacting with public can be tough sometimes. Allison exemplifies these traits and has built meaningful relationships with many customers remembering their names, families, and pets treating them like her own. Known for her passion, Allison is proactive, is a proactive individual who confronts challenges directly and remains dedicated to her goals. Her genuine concern for well-being of others has led to her promotion as an administrative assistant this past year. Having her in our landfill family for over fourteen years has been a true gift, and we look forward to many more years together. Eric Blaine, thirteen years of total service. Eric has been a trusted legal advisor to Cook County for over fourteen years. A Eugene native and graduate of U- Oregon, University of Oregon School of Law, Mr. Blaine began his tenure with the county in two thousand and ten as Assistant County Counsel. In two thousand and nineteen, he was appointed County Counsel, serving as the lead attorney for the organization. Throughout his years of service, Mr. Blaine has provided critical legal guidance on a wide range of complex issues facing the county. His exceptional integrity, sound judgment, strong leadership, and deep legal expertise has become instrumental to Cook County's continued success and strategic decision-making. Jill, I'm sorry, I don't know how to say, what is it? Bonanno. I'm sorry, Jill. Jill has an exceptional, is an exceptional team member who significant, significantly contributes to our organization. Her expertise in prevention makes her an invaluable resource for the community. Jill demonstrates unwavering dedication and a strong worth that get, work ethic consistently offering support to her peers. Our department greatly depends on Jill's reliability and extensive knowledge, which she brings to her role each day. Her commitment to excellence and collaborative spirit enhances our team's overall effectiveness. Renee Parrott, with a total of thirteen years of service. Renee joined Cook County Library in two thousand and ten as a part-time employee and progress, progressed to a full-time role, taking on numerous responsibilities. In this small library setting, she has had the opportunity to perform a variety of tasks and witness comings and goings of many individuals. Her roles have included front counter duties, invoicing, and deposits, volunteer coordination, meeting room management, participation in the safety committee, and even acting as a social worker during the challenging COVID period. Currently, Renee serves as the Children's Services Librarian, where she has successfully revitalized the area. Her commitment to the library is evident, and her hard work does not go unnoticed. We appreciate, we truly appreciate her dedication and the valuable service she provides to the community. Chris Gannon, with a total of thirteen years of service, I don't know if he's here. Um, I didn't really have anything for Chris, but Chris, thank you for everything you do. I know he works with the Watershed Council, so. Um, Carrie Anne Aaron, with the DA's Office, with a total of twelve years of service. Carrie Anne started with the District Attorney's Office in two thousand and twelve. She started out as a restitution clerk, traveling between Jefferson County and Cook County, helping victims of crime submit restitution requests for court. Carrie Anne is now a victim advocate too. She is an amazing, amazing victim advocate, always willing to go above and beyond to help victims through the criminal justice system. She often works with people who have experienced horrific trauma. Carrie Anne helps victims navigate the justice system. One of the things I, this is what Carrie said, one of the things that she appreciates about you the most is that you're always, you always have a positive attitude, and you'll go above and beyond to help victims of crime. Thank you, Carrie Anne. Julie Martinez, with a total of twelve years of service, has devoted her career to serving people of Cook County. She began in nineteen ninety-one as a volunteer uh, advocate for crime victims at the Cook County District Attorney's Office. In two thousand, she joined the juvenile department focusing on at-risk youth, while also volunteering as juvenile peer court. In two thousand and one, she became a victim advocate at the District Attorney's Office and was promoted to Victim Advocate Program Supervisor in two thousand and four. Julie worked with Lutheran Community Services, managing intensive children's treatment services and mental health support for children. Julie is a valuable member of the DA's Office in our community, and I am proud to work alongside her and call her a friend. That's what Carrie had to say about you. Casey Daly, with a total of twelve years of service. Casey joined the county twelve years ago as the Fairgrounds Manager. He demonstrates exceptional care and commitment as an employee. He's consistently exceeding expectations for the citizens when it comes to events and activities. His relentless efforts ensure the seamless operation of the fairgrounds. Always available, Casey is the go-to person at any hour. We value your unwavering dedication to the county. Dennis Rawls, with a total of twelve years of service, Dennis Rawls is a native of Primeville, completed his education at the Cook County High School, before earning his art degree at, from COCC. He's a master, he's a certified master gardener with a passion for animals. If you ever need to know any history of the fairgrounds, Dennis is the go-to expert. That's what Casey says. So hopefully, you know all the things. Max Hamblin, with a total of twelve years of service. Max is the epitome of public health. I don't know, is Max here? He's not here. As the environmental health specialist for Cook and Jefferson Counties, he works tire- tirelessly to keep our restaurants, pools, and housing environment safe from contamination and diseases. Over the past fourteen years, he has continuously exceeded in his service to the region. His knowledge combined, combined with reliability and independence has made him an asset to Cook County, Jefferson County, and the health departments and community members he serves. We greatly value Max, and we want to thank him for his exemplary work over the time he has been with us. Erica Fricki, with a total of twelve years of service. She said she didn't know if she would be able to make it, but. Erica demonstrates a strong commitment to Cook County, earning praise from her team for her innovative approach and exceptional dedication. She maintains an open-door policy, actively listening to her employees' concerns and suggestions. With a resolute character, Erica advocates for what she believes is right, even in the face of disagreement. Furthermore, she leads by example, readily undertaking any task she assigns to her own team. Amber Heiburger, with a total of twelve years of service. Amber began her career at the Cook County Library in two thousand and eleven. Over the years, she's taken on multiple roles, currently serving as the Adult Services Librarian. She enjoys her duties, which encompasses collection development, offering reference and technical support, organizing engagement, engaging programs, and creating promotional materials to boost the library's presence. We value your contributions to Cook County community, and thank you for your commitment. Barb Pennington, with a total of ten years of service. Barb began her career as the Election Deputy and advanced to the position of Chief Deputy Clerk in two thousand and fifteen. She is an exceptional team player, always ready to assist the residents of Cook County in any way possible. Her effective management of tasks, adherence to deadlines, and organize, organization skills make the election process appear seamless. Barb undertakes numerous responsibilities in our daily operations, and we're grateful for her consistent contributions that positive, that positively influence Cook County. Haley Crowe, with the District Attorney's Office, with a total of ten years of service. Haley's not here today, but Cassie will accept her certificate and pin on her behalf. Haley was hired in two thousand and thirteen as a legal receptionist. She quickly worked her way up to legal assistant and then a senior legal assistant. She works closely with code, processing all legal forfeitures for Central Oregon. She's now our grand jury coord- coordinator and takes on an inevitable task of scheduling and managing the grand jury, scheduling cases, rounding up witnesses, and victims, and managing all grand jurors. I appreciate Haley's kindness and professionalism. One of the things I appreciate the most about Haley is her commitment to the citizens of Cook County. That's what Carrie said about Haley. Yeah. Oh, Erica, you showed up. Do you want me to read yours again? Okay. Okay. Are you sure? I'll read it again. Okay.
No.
Eric, okay. Erica demonstrates a strong commitment to Cook County, earning praise from her team for her innovative approach and exceptional dedication. She maintains an open-door policy, actively listening to her employees' concerns and suggestions. With a, with a resolute character, Erica advocates for what she believes is right, even in the face of disagreement. Furthermore, she leads by example and always readily undertaking any tasks that she asks her employee to do. Thank you, Erica. Stacy Bernard, with ten years of service. Stacy is an invaluable resource for the taxpayers of Cook County. Her patience, compassion, and thoughtfulness shine through as she assists individuals facing difficult circumstances such as foreclosures. As a subject matter expert with a keen eye for detail, her commitment to her role is commendable. We are grateful for her readiness to help and her positive demeanor. Ken Bales, with the total of ten years of service. Ken began her career at the library in two thousand and thirteen as a temporary employee. During the transition to the Sierra system, she was tasked with re, re-barcoding every library item. Shortly after, she secured a part-time position in circulation, which evolved to a full-time role within a few months. As she expanded her skills through cross-training, she was well-prepared for the opportunity that arose in two thousand and eighteen, allowing her to join the public services team. Her commitment to Cook County has been invaluable, and we deeply appreciate her contributions. Ken's growth within the library exemplifies her dedication and positive impact she's made on our community. Eric Coofell, with ten years of service with the Road Department, he won't be here today. Um, Eric, Eric demonstrates a strong passion for the road maintenance, engaging in activities such as paving, chip sealing, pothole patching, plowing, and sanding. He is committed to enhancing his skills and operating new equipment and prioritizes safety in all his endeavors. Consistently present at work, Eric effectively plans for time off in the long term and is open to attending short training sessions relevant, relevant to his job responsibilities. Shannon Eilman. Shannon began her career at the Assessor's Office as a staff technician. She handled many administrative duties for the office, from mobile homes to deeds, and then was promoted to appraiser in two thousand and seventeen. The next season of Shannon's life was transformed by hours of appraisal study, passing the state exam for becoming a registered appraiser in the state of Oregon. Since that time, Shannon has moved forward to becoming our office senior appraiser. She helps supervise many of the functions within our appraisal staff group. Knowing the bulk of the appraisal functions in the office, Shannon also handles our commercial accounts in areas like Brusato Ranch and much, much more. We are proud of Shannon and her accomplishments, and she continues to be consistent, reliable figure in our office, and we can always rely on. Congrats on your ten years of service with the county. Karen Bushnell. Karen began her career with the Assessor's Office as a staff technician. She picked up all the administrative duties when an opening came for the appraiser. Karen put her name in the, in the hat. She was promoted to the appraiser position in two thousand and eighteen. Her next season of life transformed by learning more functions and duties of property tax appraisal and what a world has been. Karen has excelled at all of it. She cares deeply and works hard at everything that is handled, handed to her. She has taken great concern to getting things right and doing the best jobs for our clients, the taxpayers. Karen is also a senior appraiser and on top of that she handles all things industrial for the county. She has numerous responsibilities which change throughout the year, and Karen puts an amazing effort in doing her best to excel at, at them. We are proud to have Karen as our, as part of our team in the Assessor's Office, and congrats on your ten years of service. Alana Spry. How do we begin to describe Alana's exemplary service to the county as well as our department? She has been an incredible asset through, throughout her ten years, as she has excelled at everything she's been given, from front desk receptionist to administrative assistant and now communicable disease. Alana has adjusted and continued to provide exceptional service for our community and for our department. Her extended knowledge of public health and the history of our department is dependent on every one of our teammates. We are honored to continue to have her be a valuable part of our department. Tracy Stubblefield. I don't, I don't know if Tracy's gonna be here today. She had an emergency this morning. Tracy is the face of the office. Her knowledge and know-how are irreplaceable. She continues to exceed expectations when given office projects. Tracy takes on every task without complaint and is excellent resource for our office and community partners in need of information for assistance in any process. Tracy was awarded Support Staff of the Year for Central and Eastern Oregon of the seventeen counties that you know, is a part of the juvenile department, and we're lucky to have her as an employee. Thank you, Tracy. Mark Roden, with the, with the landfill. Mark Roden has over thirty years of experience as a heavy equipment operator and joined the Cook County landfill team a decade ago. His skills and experience have greatly benefited the department, and he, and he approaches challenges with innovative problem-solving. Mark is determined to complete any task, no matter how tough, and serves as a leader and role model for his colleagues. His commitment and loyalty to his work and coworkers are exceptional, earning him the position of Lead Equipment Operator at the landfill. A role he truly deserves. Mark is a genuine person embodying honesty and sincerity in all his interactions. Our landfill family is grateful to have him, and we are eager, and we eagerly, eagerly anticipate the next decade of working together. Linda Nishen, with the Sheriff's Office. Linda started her career at the Cook County Sheriff's Office in two thousand and fourteen as an office deputy in the Records Division. Linda, in November two thousand and twenty-two, she moved to the parole and probation unit as the office coordinator. Linda has found joy in understanding the parole and probation aspects of the Sheriff's Office and values the daily learning experiences. She's dedicated and always ready to help. In her free time, Linda enjoys being with her husband Jeff and daughter Lindsay, as well as gardening and watching Lindsay play volleyball. Thank you all for your years of service, ranging from the ten to fifteen years of service. Um, I think that it's so important to recognize you guys, you're kind of like the, the next group coming up, and I think it's really important that we obviously recognize every employee, but again, thank you guys for your service. It means a lot. Are you, are we gonna, we're gonna go to the courthouse? It's kind of cold, but that's the, that's the tradition, I think, has been going to the courthouse. So I think there's like a five-minute window.
And before we go, I just wanted to give you guys a huge thank you, because without you guys, we would not be able to give service to the public, we'd not be able to continue on as an organization. And the fact that we have so many people here that have been here for this long is really, really a great thing for this organization, and it's because of you and your hard work. Thank you so much.
Okay, field trip, I guess, huh? Okay.
Oh, sorry. Let's get back to it. I think we've got quite a few things to talk about today. All right, next would be Will with the ratification of HR Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, good morning, Commissioners. Um, I'm pleased to announce that Megan McKee has accepted the HR Director position here at Cook County. She's planning on starting January sixth, um, so I'm here to ask that you ratify her appointment to that position, HR Director. Um, and do they sit necessary authorize me to sign the necessary personal action form? So if you have any questions, please let me know. I think you both had an opportunity, opportunity to meet her. She's really excited to, to come and, and join our team, so looking forward to having her here in January.
I make a motion to, uh, approve the ratification of our HR Director hire, Megan McKee, and appoint Will Van Vactor to sign the appropriate papers.
Brian Barney seconds.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Is this another one for you, Will? Yeah, it says, oh, I'm sorry, it says Jackie.
Good morning, Jackie Davis, Creek County landfill. Um, so. I worked with Amy in HR and Will Van Vactor. On some promotions possible in our department. So Aaron Reinhardt, that was our lead equipment operator. And mechanic left our department to pursue another job opportunity in mid-November. Um, so what I would like to do is promote Mark Roden, who is our senior equipment operator, to lead equipment operator. And then also on staff currently is Clive Bigelow as an equipment operator. And I'd like to add to his job duties, a preventative maintenance tech. He worked with Aaron before Aaron left, um, to make sure he was up to speed. So those are the two promotions I'd like to make and then. I would like to go ahead and hire just a regular equipment operator for a Tuesday through Saturday shift at the landfill.
Sounds good to me.
I've talked to Jackie about this, so I don't have any questions. Um. I'm willing to go ahead and make a motion. Can I make a motion on the the way the subject is written? Eric, is that okay or?
I think that's fine. You could also make three separate motions. Um, it doesn't sound like this is particularly controversial, so maybe as I think about it, just for the ease of the minutes after the separation.
Okay, will you help me with those three separate motions then?
Uh, it sounds like the first motion.
It's Mark Roden to be.
The promotion, Mark Roden to be an operator.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Clive Bigelow.
Aye. Uh, so please be, um. Uh, appointment of Clyde Bigelow as an equipment operator.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, option to approve the engagement of an additional equipment operator to the Creek County landfill.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Brad here? Brad is not here, so I'm I'm covering for him.
Perfect.
So this is, this is a follow-up to a conversation we had. At a a prior work session about the organization of the road department, um, and the need for a third. Third mechanic, um. They, um, they've gone through an interview process, uh, for a mechanic and are recommending. The, uh, appointment of, uh, Landon Warner to that. Uh, mechanic position. He's currently a flagger within the road department, so it's an internal, internal promotion. This will not result in an additional FTE in in the road department as we discussed in the prior work session. We've, we've made some changes to that organization chart for, for the road department, so, um. No additional FTE. And, um, I think what I, what I'm here to ask for today. Is authority to sign any necessary PA, um, for that promotion.
I move for the appointment of Lander, uh.
Landon Warner.
Landon Warner as the third road department mechanic and authorize Will Van Vactor to do the, to. To sign the necessary papers.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You gonna pick up the next one too?
Got the next one as well. Again, this is a, this is a follow-up to a conversation we had at the November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four work session. Brad, uh, received some bids for, um, retrofitting the, uh, existing little boy in the. Fleet to be the new water truck after the old water truck was damaged. Um, per our conversation at that work session, Brad recommends going with the Omco, uh, bid at a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and five. Dollars, Omco's local, um. And we feel that there will be better quality control, uh, their proposed, or the, the. Their bid includes all the required options to replace what we previously had. So happy to answer any questions.
Nope.
On that.
So, uh, we've already discussed this, uh, I move to to approve option one. There is a municipal procurement contract, two, 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 nine, five, nine. Do I need to include that in the motion, Eric? I'd like you to help me kind of with that.
Uh, what I might suggest is, um, a different motion, maybe a motion if you would, um, accept recommendation of staff. Uh, as presenting the best value to the county and to authorize, uh, staff members to proceed, uh, in furtherance of the procurement.
And do not state an option.
Well, I think the, uh, motion incorporates what the staff recommendation is, so we'll have the staff recommendation in the packet in the minutes. So that's going to be.
Okay, already.
You could, posting it, um. I think that will. Achieve the desired result, um, that I think I heard the board of commissioners say they want to proceed.
Okay, so will you restate your motion and I will say so moved.
So I think the motion would be something like, uh, a move to, um, accept staff recommendation on the procurement. As reflecting the best value to the county, um, and to authorizing staff to act in accordance with that procurement.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Andrew?
Good morning, Andrew Asmussen, Creek County Sheriff's Office. So, uh, what I want to discuss today is moving forward with the acceptance of a. Uh, grant from the CJC for, uh, jail-based medications for opioid use disorder. Um, essentially with the recriminalization of drugs in the state of Oregon through House Bill four zero zero two. Uh, the Criminal Justice Commission set aside ten million dollars in the state of Oregon earmarked specifically for, uh, jail-based medication. So that we can assist with treating, uh, the drug addicted people that come into our facility. Excuse me, as we anticipate that being a growing concern, uh, with them coming in. Uh, through a metric, kind of divi- a formula devised by them that I don't know how they created it, they essentially set aside. Up to two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars for Creek County. Uh, my role in that so far is I essentially raised my hand to the CJC, said, yes, we would be interested in this money. Uh, we currently have an MOU with, uh, Best Care Addiction Medicine Clinic to provide those services. And my role in with the grant funding would be just to purchase the medication. Uh, they would administer the meds as per the MOU. They, uh, do all the follow-up and it creates a soft handoff from the jail into the community, uh, MAT provider. Um, with that, when I, uh, essentially put in the cost for the medications, we were awarded up to two hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred dollars. Uh, and again, that would be strictly just used essentially to purchase medication. It's a shelf-stable room temperature, uh, medication, so it's, it's. I would be able to use a a great deal of these funds just to create a stockpile. So if we don't use it all, it's not a use it or lose it in a month kind of thing. It can stay on the shelf for a couple of years. It can be stored in the jail locked and secured, um. And essentially what what we're coming down to, Commissioners, is this is becoming a standard of care in the community. Which the jail is obligated to maintain a community level of care. So it's becoming more and more necessary for us to take these steps and provide these services inside our jail to people that qualify for it. So, um, essentially why I'm here today is, uh, just seeking approval to move forward with grant acceptance and contracting. And then working with finance to kind of figure out, make sure that's, uh, input properly, make sure that, um. We all understand the proper reporting and all that good stuff, so that we're using the grant appropriately. And, um, I'm moving forward with it so that this doesn't come out of, uh, sheriff's office budget, county budget, anything like that. It's, it's through this grant, we can stockpile this expensive medication.
So I have a question for you. So, so Best Care administers it, so, so if that patient has a reaction or anything. We provided the medication, but we haven't administered or did the dosage. Who does that go back on as far as liability?
Um, the way it's written in the MOU. And Eric could probably provide guidance to you, they kind of went over it with us, is we're essentially. All the sheriff's office role in that in the jail is we, uh, refer them to Best Care. Best Care essentially provides all the care. If there's an adverse reaction, anything that they are responsible for the, uh, aftercare piece of that. And if there is a, uh, reaction response, anything like that, it's, it's their responsibility. Um, the jail's responsibility is essentially to report it, make sure that they're aware to provide the care. And then it kind of goes back to them. Um, there is a process to this medication. We do test anybody who gets it, uh, because there is, uh. A portion of the population that's allergic to buprenorphine. So we test them with a small dosage amount to make sure there's not an allergic reaction before they're given a long-acting injectable to limit the. Uh, likelihood of a response. Um, it's, it's a very tested, very safe medication. Um, and one of the ones we, the one we chose has a very low level of, um, diversion inside the population. So it's not a concern, a high concern of them, uh, that's concealing them in some way and then diverting it into our jail population, anything like that. It's a, it's a rapid response, long-acting injectable medication.
So on that first little low dosage, do you do it or does Best Care?
They do it.
So totally, all you have is a bottle on a shelf, basically.
Hundred percent all.
Okay.
And our nurses, all we do is identify eligible people based on why are they here? Are they claiming addiction? And then they are referred to Best Care.
And then they.
They will come in to an independent assessment and their provider oversees the administration of any medication.
Okay.
We're pretty much hands-off after the referral.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay.
Yeah, it makes sense to me. Any other, any other questions?
No, I, I, um, I'm assuming that we make a motion to accept the grant from CJC regarding the MAT. To the Crook County Jail in the, in the amount of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred dollars.
So Commissioners.
Would you like to add in Best Care or anything of that? What, what do we do there?
Yeah, Commissioners, um, as I understand it, CJC may not have issued the final, uh, grant award yet. Uh, we have some correspondence, this is an interview, a few weeks ago, saying that they could send it out, not later than, than December thirteenth. Um, they did quite helpfully provide us with a form saying this is what it is going to look like. But we reviewed and it had terms that the counties agreed to in the past, so. Um, I don't know if they have issued the final, uh, grant document yet.
They have not, um, so that I, all I did at this point was just say that we weren't contesting the award. Um, and I was waiting for approval and then, like Eric said, they're going to be moving forward the next week or two with, um. The actual awards and contracting piece of it.
So it's premature then to actually make a motion to accept or how do we handle this?
So, um, assuming they do get it out, uh, by December thirteenth, uh, one option is, uh, to put it on the agenda. With the Creek County Board of Commissioners meeting on December eighteenth, and they get it approved there. Um, another option might be to, um, authorize the execution of the grant award document once it's issued. Subject to there not being any. Material differences between, um, the sample granting board document we reviewed. And final grant award document.
I like basically.
Sorry, Sarah.
Okay. I basically like option two because it just goes ahead and lets it come right in and you can have, I mean, in my opinion, but. Is that okay with you? So would you help me then word your option two motion?
Yes.
So Commissioners, uh, what I might suggest is a motion to authorize staff members. To approve the CJC, uh, MAT grant award on behalf of Creek County. Subject to the final grant award document having no material differences. Uh, compared to the sample grant award document that has been previously reviewed.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly?
Good morning. Kelly Koppold, Airport Manager, for the record. Uh, so I'm here this morning looking for a tent, intent to award to two, two KG contractors. Uh, in the amount of one million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Um, this is for the T-Hanger Construction Project and we've talked about this quite a bit in the last couple of years. So, uh, the project is, uh, it's a storage building for aircraft about eleven thousand square feet. Sure. It's approximately eleven thousand square feet storage building for aircraft. Um, majority of this is funded through the FAA and, uh, uh, part of it is also funded through the, uh, the state of Oregon. Um, these funds were provided. And I guess, uh, became available to use for a revenue generating project for the airport. Um, so we've bid this, this is the second time we've bid this, um, obviously money's tight and construction costs have been high. Um, so this has been, uh, was bid a year ago. We came back this year hoping for a little bit lower bids. Um, but not, not so much.
Wishful thinking.
Yeah, so, so we're at a crossroads where, uh, do we move forward with the project and the funds that are available? Um, and then support it, uh, through airport funds to get the project, you know, done. Um, or, or do we, uh, or do we back off? Um, the problem with backing off is the funds, um, the FAA funds and the state funds basically go away. Uh, if we don't move forward with this project, the time, timeframe is too short. So, um. With the. Amount of the project, uh, we're looking at roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that needs to come from the airport. Funds. Um, we have the money, um, money was provided from, uh, sales and property a couple of years ago. And, and that money was kind of slated for revenue projects for the airport. And, um, so this is, this works out well. Um, we believe that if they're all full, um, revenue generating would be about sixty thousand dollars a year. Um, it probably takes a little time to get them all full. Uh, the project would probably start. Um. Sometime in February, hopefully have it done by end of summer. Um. So this, uh, in, as far as our budget was concerned, we had a bu- a budgeted amount, but it was mostly based upon the funding. Amounts that we had. Um. And obviously we hadn't gotten the second round of bids together yet, so, uh, our budget doesn't reflect the full cost of the project. Uh, I have had some conversations, um, with Christina in regards to this and how it affects, uh, our budget. Um, the main portion is our five-year outlook, uh, we're gonna have to do some adjustments to that. Um, but I believe that with the revenue generating, uh, portion of the project, we'll be able to backfill this money. Uh, fairly quickly, so. So looking for approval for a tent to, intent to award. And. If there's any questions.
Okay, can I, Jamie, can I ask you as far as budget or, or Christine, I didn't even see you. How you look at our budget and how this works in with what Kelly's saying? Sure. Okay. You need to come up to the microphone. Sorry, sorry, Christina.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Uh so uh Kelly and I did put this in our five-year forecast and look at the revenue receipts. Uh ramping it up over three years to get full occupancy. We actually don't dip under a million dollar fund balance in the airport, which was kind of the. Uh goal over the next five years because of the additional revenue that we had not previously forecasted. We were only looking at about forty thousand. In revenue a year from those hangers. When we look at the sunk cost that we've already spent on it of a hundred and fifty thousand and the revenue that we would lose. If we did not continue with the project, it makes more sense to continue with this project and we do have that. Repayment of that fund balance in five to ten years, probably closer to the five-year mark.
Okay, so you feel comfortable with this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Kelly and I spent an hour working through it with the five-year forecast that we put together and kind of reviewing all of that. In context of what this project do to other projects as well. And the fund balance does look like it stays around that million dollar mark, which I feel pretty comfortable with it.
Okay, thank you, Christina.
Super helpful.
Okay. Ryan, would you maybe like to, this is more your baby, would you like to? Make a motion?
Yeah, I'll 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 make a motion that we approve the um recommendation to award. The Primeville Creek County Airport New Aviation T Hangar Project and Taxi Line um project number three dash four one. Dash zero zero five one dash zero two three dash twenty twenty five. I I do have one um thing I would like to ask though is that um. The legal department follow up with uh bend uh school district and confirm that the. Apparent little bitter uh two KG Contractors Inc. Uh will pass the mustard to perform this.
Commissioner, you said check with the school district?
Yes. As a reference.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Before you guys pass the motion, there was a note in there from PAE on their recommendation that we were waiting for FAA concurrence before awarding this. We just got that email half an hour ago. Um and then also I would uh probably suggest adding on to Brian's motion a uh authorization to sign out of court following the bid protest period.
Ryan, do you so move that amendment?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay, and I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Return, Katie.
Good morning, Commissioners. Katie McDonald, Senior Planner for the Record. The ordinance before you is a result of the Planning Commission decision regarding a zone map change for a property in Palbutte. The. Planning Commission, the application went through two public hearings, a public hearing and a continuation was sent out for notice. Uh no appeals and no testimony was uh negative testimony was received. This particular property was included in the Palbutte study and. Included during that land use process, which was the exception uh to the state goal and the comprehensive plan amendment. There's a specific code in our zoning uh code eighteen twelve. That requires um an ordinance to finalize the zone map change. So the property is going from EFU um exclusive farm use Palbutte. Area to rural residential ten. And it was included in ordinance. One nine seven amendment one, this specific property as irrevocably committed to uses other than agriculture. So um. It is now, uh the ordinance is now before you um for two readings.
So this is just the first reading?
Yes.
So there's no action required. This is just a public information.
Will we not read two times today?
Yeah. No, there'll be a second, won't there?
Yeah, my understanding, Katie, correct me if I'm wrong, is that there would be a second reading at a future meeting.
Okay.
Procedurally, what I might suggest is first a me uh motion to read ordinance three forty seven by title only. Assuming that's passed, then open a public hearing and receive any sort of public comment there might be.
Yeah, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You're gonna read it?
I don't have the ordinance in front of me. No, I don't think it is. Not at all.
No?
I I'll read it. It's an ordinance amended.
There it is, there it is.
County zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
Three four seven to adopt a zone map chain.
It's right here.
MTL one six one four one one zero 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 seven zero zero and declaring an emergency.
Alright, so now we open the public hearing?
Do we have to read the whole ordinance, don't we, Brian?
I I did if I was not muted.
I I'm sorry, everyone. I was taking notes. I I wasn't listening. Was there already a vote on the motion to read by title?
Yes.
Yes.
There was, alright.
And he read the title, but do we have to do the whereas Martin?
No, no, that's the whole idea of reading the ordinance by title only.
Okay.
So you don't have to read every single word of it. Um so now I think you can just open up a hearing and see if there's anyone who has strong feelings.
Anybody in the audience here? Is that what you're here for, Bill? No? Oh. Anybody online? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, so then we'll wait till next. Two weeks and get her done?
And just a note, um at the second reading, there will most likely be a change in the title, but there won't be a substantive change to any of the additional.
Okay.
Okay, Will, back?
Good morning again. Um in your packet this morning is a proposed. Letter to FEMA regarding the buy op issue we have discussed um. A few times previously, um this letter is modeled off of a letter that Tillamook County. Was, and I believe sent to to FEMA um in short, um. The letter outlines our concerns about FEMA's legal authority to impose the pick them options that we've discussed. A couple of work sessions previously and confirms that the county will uh. You know, pursue with complying with applicable laws such as the Endangered Species Act. There was um some discussion of having me just send the letter, but after thinking about it and and talking about it with County Council's Office. I decided it would be best to have the board send the letter. Um so uh that's the reason it is in your packet today. Happy to discuss any questions you might have about the letter.
Nope, I'm good with it.
No, I have to say that I have to appreciate uh AOC's uh conference where this was discussed and. And the other counties, we all talked about it. And I think that uh they were very, very helpful. So I make a motion for us to. Sign and send the FEMA National Flood Insurance Program Letter that has been crafted by Crook County.
Uh Brian seconds.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, alright, oh, yes, Brian?
Yes, uh and if Brianna would stamp, she has authority to just knew my name with a stamp.
I'm very good with your stamp, Brian, just as a warning to you.
I said Brianna.
Isn't as good. I had to do the employee. She she was scared. So I just want you to know I'm very good, uh Brian.
Okay, thank you.
So Commissioners, uh Jamie and I are gonna tag team this. Um the issue that's coming up in front of you is that unfortunately, time is not an ally. In the context of filling a vacancy uh in the Kirk County Budget Committee. Um as I understand it, uh the deadline for submitting applications is coming up on December thirteenth, which is a Friday. Um but for a variety of reasons, um having to do with the budget calendar, it would be ideal if somebody could be. Uh appointed to fill that role, not later than Wednesday uh December eighteenth, so not a lot of time. Um I also understand that as of yesterday afternoon, there are uh two applicants who have put in their names and who knows. If anyone else is going to in the next few days. Um the county has adopted an order two thousand twenty-two dash fifty-two, which describes the normal process. For filling um uh the vacancies on county boards and committees. Um but that order does include a provision that makes it clear that the Board of Commissioners has authority. To deviate from those normal procedures, um either for an individual committee or for an individual circumstance and. Um given the fact that time is not an ally, the Budget Committee ideally would get started as soon as possible. Um there may be interest in not having the normal process followed in this particular instance. Um the normal process, I'm gonna paraphrase from the order, is after the deadline. Uh passes, the individual committee will discuss the candidates. And they may make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. That could be a recommendation as to who to approve uh. Approve. Um it could be that uh the county should um continue advertising and see if there are. More candidates who are interested. Could be any number of things. Then the Board of Commissioners considers whether to accept the recommendation or take some other sort of action. Uh and uh if someone is chosen, then an order of appointment would be. An order of appointment would be prepared. There's not a lot of time between the thirteenth and the eighteenth. Um and so I guess the question then is. Does the Board of Commissioners want to follow the normal process? Does the Board of Commissioners want to deviate from that process? And if so. Um what options there might be. One thing that the Board of Commissioners might consider is just saying in this particular instance. The county will forego the normal standard of having the committee discuss the candidates. And just have maybe the Board of Commissioners discuss the candidates at the December eighteenth meeting. Um I'm happy to answer any questions. Jamie, do you think I've left anything out?
Can we just have maybe the employees make a recommendation? Maybe you guys be comfortable with that?
I think, yeah, one option would be, I I my understanding is because this is the board's policy, there's flexibility. And I think we could go in a couple of different directions, but one option would be to have the um. The the two members of the, the two citizen members of the Budget Committee and maybe one staff person, maybe Jamie as the Budget Manager. Make a recommendation. Um I think one of the problems is the Budget Committee is comprised of the three citizen members. And then the three boards of, or the three county commissioners. Um so it's hard to get a quorum. Um without including the Commissioners in that. And since you guys make the ultimate decision, I don't think it makes sense to have you guys making a rec. One of you or two of you making a recommendation to the board. So um if that's okay with Jamie, it might make sense to have the two. Two committee, citizen committee members who are not, um these terms are not expiring. Review the applications with a staff member and then that group of three makes a recommendation to the to the board.
So I I'm gonna be a turd in the punch bowl, unfortunately. So I I'd be concerned that if there is a quorum of the Budget Committee. Or at least the citizen members, um that that might trigger then the obligations to have. That group, because they're making a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, they're appointed by the Board of Commissioners. To conform with the public meetings laws. And again, unfortunately, time's not an ally. So I think in the normal circumstances, that might be helpful. Um in this case, I think that is um. Unfortunately, just putting us back in the same position that we were before.
What if the two employees that work on the budget the most? Christina and Jamie, or they just give us their recommendation of what they believe would be a good fit for the, and they could. Say one, two, or three, or what? I I don't think it has to be super in-depth. I think. Am I wrong that we have a really good member that's reapplying? So I I mean, I think we have a pretty good option. For moving forward, but I would I would like to hear your input because you guys are gonna be the ones that are dealing with them. Quite a bit and interacting a lot. So I, could we just have the two employees that deal with the committee the most? Give a recommendation?
So what I might suggest then is that you, if if that's what you wanna do, um I think. I'll be frank, I think that is one more step that you don't need because you're going to have to ultimately approve this. Um appointment that's gonna take a public meeting. Um you can have the presentation at that public meeting. And you can have the individual uh staff member say, here is what we think. Um I, if you do want to have that process, what I think you should do is make it clear that those members are. Not um required to have a quorum to make any sort of decision and that the recommendation. From those members will be.
Which members?
The two people you were talking about.
They're they're employees of the county.
Yes.
They're not members of the committee.
I understand.
So what committee would they be members of?
What I'd be concerned about is that someone argue that this is a subcommittee appointed by the Board of Commissioners to provide the recommendation. Subject to the requirement that they uh meet the public meetings laws. And what I'm hoping to do is present a circumstance where the county uh does not run into the circumstance where it receives a complaint. That it had a subcommittee that did not meet publicly. That would trigger then an obligation to respond to a grievance under one ninety-two seven oh five.
Eric, a subcommittee would not be a a would consist of the staff, two people. And will make a recommendation. As employees, that's not considered a committee, is it?
Um arguably, if the requirements um that are otherwise present in one ninety-two. Six ten and six thirty um are present, then yes, it would. Um and that's part of the reason why I would recommend that if there is any kind of recommendation, that it be clear. Those people who are appointed do not have to make a decision uh subject to a quorum. The decision.
How about this then? How about between now and the eighteenth, we are on our own to talk with the employees and see what their thoughts are and then we can make a decision?
On the eighteenth?
On the eighteenth.
But, okay, we have applications for this committee. I know that. I know that normally we, normally we don't meet in January, but we made the recommendation in June that we wanted to do a January meeting. That's why we're kind of circumventing this system, right? So. On the eighteenth, would we have those applications? And what it, what, what are we not doing is so we're not give, we're not doing the thirty day advertisement?
No, you are.
We're doing the thirty day advertisement and on December eighteenth, we review the applications and we appoint. Is that?
So take a look.
So where is the exception?
So what I, what I would recommend, I I I don't think there's any concern about having a public meeting for maybe the two budget committee, citizen budget committee members. And an appointed staff member to review the applications and conduct the interviews. So I think we could notice that. Next week, the applications are due on the thirteenth, which I believe is a Friday. Uh but we can notice that the Budget Committee plus. Stat, whatever staff member or members you wanna appoint to it are gonna meet. On Monday and then the recommendation would be ready for the eight meeting on.
Wednesday.
If I understand Eric's concern correctly about needing to notice that, that meeting, I don't think there's any concern about noticing.
And then we've properly met all of our rules at the, on on that schedule.
So uh one question is, uh would the meeting be held under uh an executive session? Or would it be held under?
Why would it?
Why would it be under?
Why would?
I'm asking if.
I think it should be.
Do you want to, then there are other requirements that need to be happened, but you don't have to have it.
I think it should be public. The budget, it's their money. The public should have a right to it.
Member of a committee that I don't think you can do that. Member of a committee that, I don't think you can do that in the executive session.
So if you want to move forward with that, just to make sure that we get in the minutes, what I think I heard is that after the deadline closes on the 13th, a group will gather composed of the two citizen members of the Budget Committee plus, I think I heard it was Will, but correct me if I'm wrong. Either Will or Jamie. That that will be separately advertised as a meeting of, for lack of a better word, an advisory group. That advisory group will meet hopefully on the following Monday, maybe the following Tuesday. That depends on, of course, the availability of the individuals with the goal of having a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners on December 18th. Is that correct?
So I have one more question. So because you're having the two Budget Committee people, are they considered, even though it's a public meeting and it's noticed, are they considered that they're a quorum because there's only three or it's not a quorum because there's three commissioners and three budgets? That's why I wouldn't
Let me, let me get some clarification.
But I want to make sure.
Are you asking, is it a quorum of the Budget Committee or of this other group?
It would be, I guess, of the Budget Committee, but it wouldn't because there's six members, right?
So of the Budget Committee, it would not be a quorum.
Okay, that's all I want to make
But of a potential subcommittee, it would be a quorum of the subcommittee.
But it's a public meeting.
It still wouldn't matter because you got a public meeting.
Yes. Okay, that's all. I just want to make sure we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is. And I'm totally fine with that solution. And is the 18th a meeting here in the annex? And that works out perfectly.
Great.
So can we, so, do we need a motion for that then?
I would suggest a motion.
So can you reiterate that into a motion for us?
So I think the motion would be, well, let me, let me see if I can type this up. So everyone can All right, so what I think I heard the Commissioners say is a motion to invoke Section 6 of Order 2022-52 and establish a process for the vacancy on the Cook County Budget Committee whereby two, the two citizen committee members and one staff member will meet publicly on December 6th or just, excuse me, December 16th or 17th to consider a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners on December 18th as to who the Board of Commissioners should appoint to fill that vacancy.
Is that your, that's the completion of the motion?
That's what I think I've heard.
All right, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you guys for figuring that out. Now we're onto the calendar. You have like a huge like whiteboard to show us this?
All right, Jamie Berger, Budget Manager for Cook County, for the record. In your packet should be our draft budget calendar for the fiscal year 2026, with today being kind of the official kickoff of all the activities to come forth.
So excited. Really excited.
In years past, this kickoff hasn't, hasn't been happening until mid to later January. And so we are trying to get ahead of it, build in a little bit more bandwidth for our departments and for our budget team to, to more easily meet deadlines that are coming. So I don't know if there's any questions you have about this. This follows a very similar pattern to what we've done in years past. The most notable change other than building in more time is we would like to have the goal setting in mid-January instead of late February. Again, so that we have those goals and priorities established before the departments are putting together their numbers. So it's just an adjustment kind of of our order of operations. The end goal of those Budget Committee meetings are still anchored to that second week in May. So as far as, you know, as far as Commissioners are concerned, the, the things that impact you the most would be those goal-setting sessions in January, but we're still holding Budget Committee like we have been. There's a few, there was one little potential typo, the Finance Committee reviewing fiscal policies. We have that as the second item on the calendar. The people who are involved in that, it currently says county commissioner. Well, if you don't want to weigh in on that, I don't believe we need a county commissioner to be a part of that committee. With a county manager in place and a finance director, treasurer should be enough to form that Finance Committee to review fiscal policies and then bring them to the Commissioners for final approval of any recommended changes. So if you're comfortable with that, we would remove county commissioner as one of the involved parties for that Finance Committee. But other than that, were there any other points of discussion? Oh, and then December 6th would be Friday. It is unlikely that the Finance Committee will be reviewing the fiscal policies by Friday of this week, but it will be happening
Within the month?
Within the month.
Yeah.
So for the microphone, Christina, Finance Director had said, we'd like to have the fiscal policies, that Finance Committee review fiscal policies before we go into goal setting. So those would be put before the Commissioners prior to January 13th.
So do we need a motion to replace Commissioner to County Manager?
County Manager is already listed.
So
So it's just, it's just a matter of it on accident, it was a typo that it got left.
So there's no, there's no requirement of anything other than announcing it?
That's a good question and I, I think this is a question for you, Jamie. So they, they need to approve the budget calendar, correct? As part of the process. So I think with the motion to approve, we would just note that those changes that we discussed have been made. So removal of the Commissioner and just as far as the date for the adoption of the, or yeah, just that the fiscal policies will
So we don't have to draw it out, we just approve the calendar and we're, we're, we're good?
With those, with those edits.
Do we have to draw out those edits?
I think they're, they're, they're relatively small in nature. So I'll just clarify in the motion that the Commissioner's been removed from
Okay. So the one is the Commissioner and what's the second edit?
And the, the date that the Finance Committee will meet by to review fiscal policies.
By end of month?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Changed date. Okay, so are there, well?
Is there anything else that you see in this calendar that you recommend for a change or that you have questions about?
Nope, I think you guys are all doing a wonderful job.
Totally agree.
Yep. Okay. So I make a motion to approve the calendar for, for 20, well FY26 budget process and to, with the exception of we will remove a Commissioner from that Finance Committee and we will change the December 6th meeting to, just to fall within the end of the month.
I second.
Thanks.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Hey, John?
Commissioners, we have another fee waiver reduction request from Justin Alderman. This current public records request is the one directed towards Cook County is for emails. There's, there's four parts to this. Emails and attachments with Big Summit and Summit Prairie. For those only coming from Tim DeBooth's email account and then countywide search for terms WIBL, news media, Alderman, and Primeville Review from January 1st to the present. All emails between INRAC members and System Mod with BLM and United States Forest Service, our public records retention policy, all emails and texts countywide with Tim DeBooth and INRAC from November 13th to present. County database logs on some various things about meetings and when edits were made on our website between November 13th and 21st. The early estimate that we have on this request is four and a half hours of staff, of IT time and two and a half hours of attorney time. This is again, a very early estimate. We don't know exactly what we're going to see. All we know is Chelsea ran a search for those terms and it had 5,000 emails in it for number one, and those would all need to be produced by her and then reviewed by County Council. Again, it's the same test we had last time, considering a fee waiver reduction is a totality of the circumstances test. We look at everything and come to a reasonable decision. Some relevant factors include the requestor's identity, the purpose for which the requestor intends to use the information, the character of the information, whether the requested information is already in the public domain, and whether the requestor can demonstrate the ability to disseminate the information to the public. Mr. Alderman's basis for this fee waiver reduction request is included in the packet and the, and his email. Again, here the requestor's ability to disseminate the information as a member of the press is substantial and relevant. Since this is a totality of the circumstances test, I do think it's fair to question the, the public's interest in search terms like Alderman is his own personal name versus, you know, the rest of the information. A public body may consider, also consider the aggregate effect of numerous public records requests from the same requestor in assessing its burden. This is the second fee waiver request in, I think, the last month. There have been de minimis requests in the interim that have not been substantial, but these are starting to aggregate. The decision just has to be reasonable, can deny, waive 100% or anything in between. But before you decide, Mr. Alderman has also brought up multiple times the process that we go by where the decision is, comes to the County Commissioners to make the decision each time that it's inefficient. And so despite the transparency concerns, I wanted to bring up the idea of amending our public records request policy. I went through that. There are a lot of the, it was, it was approved in 2017 and there's a lot in there that just could use some, some updates. For instance, we've switched to a website form where we can send the request and that really isn't mentioned much in the policy. The current policy says that people bring the forums, the paper forms to administration office to be time stamped and then have that be delivered to legal. That seems inefficient to me. And so it could use some updates, but going through that update, I think it would also make sense to maybe think of a process whereby if we have the same requestor for similar requests that have the same basis for the fee waiver and reduction, that the Board of Commissioners could authorize the county's records custodian, which is legal, to basically process the fee waiver requests within the parameters set by the Board of Commissioners moving forward. And so that could look a lot of different ways. But for instance, you know, if Mr. Alderman had this request now, you guys could say, you know, if, if once a month, Mr. Alderman could get a 10% reduction on a fee waiver request as long as it's, the total bill is under $500 or something like that. It's, it's, it's up to your discretion on how to do this, but that would be a process to kind of remove this portion of the public records request fee waiver process. That does take up a lot of county and staff time. I would also want to look at trying to find a way to recapture the time spent by staff before we give them the deposit. You know, there's been a lot of emails between Mr. Alderman and I and a lot of correspondence with IT and myself before we get to this estimate. Well over an hour for me, over an hour for IT. That's not recaptured anywhere. You know, there's, so basically I wanted to ask you guys if you guys had interest in us taking a hard look at our public records request policy and trying to find a way to make it, you know, updated as, as need be and then more efficient for situations like this.
Yeah, I, I think that's a really good idea. I think it would be worth, I'm sorry. I think it would be really worthwhile to look at like what other, some other entities do that are similar to us and where they, where it's held. Is it in legal everywhere? Are there certain things that they don't charge for when it comes to clicks on a website or, you know, what we're talking about? That, that I'm very, very unconcerned about and I think we should make that very easy to get when it comes to emails that legal has to go through and ensure that it's not something that is unshareable, you know, you know what I'm saying, is not sensitive material. I'm much more concerned about that because I know that that is something that you have to spend your time on. The, the fact of you know, who clicked on what website or uploaded what that? I don't think there's any way with a straight face, we could say that's not allowed to, to be shared. So when it comes to stuff like that, we should really try and streamline those things where I'm, I'm more willing to take a slower step on the other stuff that so that would be my feeling. And I, I think I'm, I'm happy for legal to be involved when it comes to, I mean, I think if we set up a, a system of what is and isn't something that legal needs to work on, we can probably streamline it and make it a lot cheaper for everyone. No matter who they are requesting, requesting things. And so, yeah, I, I think it's really important that we do a deep dive and come up with a system that works best to get as much information to the public as possible.
I have no problem with being transparent to the public. What I do have a problem with is that we have to value our taxpayer dollars and we have to look at every penny our taxpayers are paying. And that is where I'm very, very concerned because right now we have people that are having a tough time paying their property taxes and they're deciding whether they can eat this month or they can pay their property taxes. And so when you have that kind of, of out there economy, I want to look really tight at every cent we're, we're spending. And I know that the last time he came and asked for that, it was we decided to give him an hour free and then whatever it was. So yes, we need to do this, but again, we also need to respect every taxpayer in this. And again, I'm a very transparent person. I think that everyone on our committees, they do not try to do anything wrong. They are volunteers. They intentionally are not trying to do anything wrong. I've never seen anybody in any of the committees I've been on, and I was in INRAC on these discussions. Again, I just really, really am concerned about our taxpayers' dollars. And so I want to really guard those dollars. And I don't know what Brian's thoughts are, but those are my thoughts.
Yeah, my thoughts are I, I never hurts to go and review our policies and update them and, and make sure that we're doing things right and correct openly. And, and I feel like Susan, in respect to, if you want to request all this information, then you need to pay for it. And we need to hold the line on that for all the same reasons.
I'll, I'll just add, it's, it's not as taxpayer dollars, there is an opportunity cost. You know, my time here is limited. Each day I have work to do, I have a lot of county business to do and, and working on public records request is a diversion. It, it has to make these things be put aside a little bit. I also should mention that this, this public records request was to the county as well as to individual INRAC members, Mike Lunn and Steve Maguire. But, so the, the information presented today is only for that, it's directed at Cook County, but so the, the information presented today is only for that, that's directed at Cook County, but um as those are members uh working on county business, county council is also going to be working on their request. And that's not included in this fee waiver.
No, I, I agree. We need to recoup our costs. I mean, and, and that even trickles down to the taxpayers. They're paying for our wages.
Yeah.
We can't do it efficiently and effectively, then we need to become safe for it.
Yeah, uh, that's exactly what I'm talking about is that I think there's things that can be quickly disseminated that won't take as much time. And if they don't have to go to John and Eric's office and they can just be sent out and it's
Totally fine with me.
It's not something that rises to the level of uh potential not being able to be shared, we should just share it and get it over with and, and move on instead of uh having the legal department talk about it for ten hours and and I think that will in the short and long term, save a lot of money for the taxpayers. But I think again, let's look at other entities and what they do for best practices and
But I, and I agree that, that we look at the other entities, but again, I want to guard our taxpayers. I really do because again, if you're looking about paying your taxes or eating, that's pretty serious. And that is the first, finance department can tell you that is the first time that's ever happened. And that concerns me. And so I, I want to really guard our taxpayers.
Which I, I think I hear what you're saying. Um, I can go back, uh, put my head together with, with Mr. Blaine and uh Mr. Van Vactor and I can uh, we can go through what, what obviously needs to be changed in our policy and then I can do a search of uh other uh governmental entities and what they're doing. Uh, and I can probably present a red line version of an amended policy at, you know, one of the January work sessions.
Sounds good to me.
Then we can hash it out there and, and I hear all of your concerns and
I am not
About, about that. We need to find a balance there. I agree.
Yes, we need to find a balance. I am not entertaining at this moment to do a fee waiver. Not until we have figured this out.
So that, yeah, there's, there's two issues. There's the amended policy issue and then there's this particular fee waiver request.
And I am not at this time until we figure this all out.
Other commissioners, do you have a?
Yeah, I mean, I think we should look at it and look at the time, value, cost of, you know, if it's, like I said, if it's going through and individually having an attorney look at every email.
Seven hundred dollars. It's seven hundred ninety-five dollars.
You know, I
That's a lot of money.
Those are money, those are, those are things that should be charged because we can't, you know, we need to make sure that we have the right information going out. If it's something like who uploaded a file or when that file was uploaded and that doesn't, there's no legalese to it. I think stuff like that, we should just be putting out. And it shouldn't even come to their desk. I think we should set up, shut up a system where as long as it's within, you know, that it doesn't hit any alarm bells of like this might be private information. I think we should just be releasing it.
And Commissioner, uh, that is the existing policy.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, that's already in order two thousand seventeen dash, I think it's two thousand seventeen eighty. So I, I think John's suggestion that it might be time to examine the policy and see if there is a way that we can improve it is very appropriate, but to address your specific concern, that's already been there and it's been there for a long time.
So is there any of the requests that doesn't have legal?
Yeah, so items, items three is just our policy. Uh, for records retention, already have that. I can email that to him. And then number five is the one about um, you know, updating our website. Um, IT has told me that would take roughly half an hour if we have the capability to get that information. And so that would be a de minimis request.
So we would just send that without a charge?
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
So that could be the, the waiver could be, you know, items three and five um are free. Um, but he would need to pay the, the county's rate on the rest of it. And again, this is just an estimate. We could, you know, if you paid the estimate, um, could look at things and, and get it done in less time than we estimated. And he would get money back. Uh, or we could go through things and get you know, I, I don't know how long it takes to go through that many emails. Uh, hopefully there are a lot of repeats, but you know, I could get through a hundred of them uh in the two and a half hours that I estimated because there's complex stuff in there. And then I need to come back and ask for another thousand dollars. And so um at this juncture, I think it does make sense to give him a, a fee waiver on those.
So you're willing to waive three and five is what you would like? And then the rest is on, on?
It's not my decision to make, but what I'm hearing from the Board of Commissioners is that those items that don't take a legal review um that are, that are easy to produce.
Okay.
Um, you know, it, it'd be time from Chelsea, but um
Okay.
Not as much as the rest of it.
Okay, I'm willing to make a motion then for uh waiver of fees for number three and number five on the email from uh Primeville Review, Review for a public records request to Cook County Natural Resource Advisory Committee and members McGuire and Len. But the eight hundred dollars I'm not willing to do.
Brian?
Yeah, what was number five?
Number five is for Cook County only, all database or file-based logs for actions related to Cook County meetings webpage system. Specifically when users uploaded content, made postings of meetings, edits, namely including user information, data time, and if included, specific content and date time of login and log out of such users for the period of November thirteenth to November twenty first.
And that doesn't take any time from IT to do?
It does, Commissioner Barney. Chelsea's estimated it would take um about a half an hour to maybe an hour at the most, but she's not sure if we have the capability to produce that, but, but that's her, her early estimate.
What's the difference between waiving it for the IT department and not waiving it for, for, for the legal department though? I mean, it's a county department. It all costs money.
Yeah, you're right.
I, I, I think Commissioner, a lot of the other items would take um Chelsea said a lot more time than, than number five.
Yeah, so now we measuring time. What, so do we have a basic time if it takes less than a half an hour, we don't charge for it?
I forget exactly what the time that it was. Yes, we use the word, the term de minimis. Um, and I forget if there's a cap on that, but it's uh, at least in my office, usually if it's uh half an hour, an hour or less to produce the documents, then um there's a, I don't charge a fee.
Okay, just so it's documented and everyone understands, not you know, e- everyone.
Yep.
And quite frankly, I've heard the prairie sold, so all of this is not.
Have you confirmed it?
I haven't, no, I haven't. But that's what I heard.
This isn't just directed at Mr. Alderman. This is a policy that needs to be directed to everyone.
For everybody. And I agree with you, Brian, totally.
For a single person.
Yeah, I, I totally and totally agree with you. And it's something, again, it's, it's our taxpayers is who it really affects. And so if you're fine with your, I have never heard the word dimin- diminuous?
Minimus.
Minimus. That's a new one on me. I'm gonna have to practice that, so I'll throw that in a conversation someday. But uh, if you feel three and five are, are de minimis, then I will make a motion for three and five, but I will not make a motion for the seven ninety-five at all.
I, I will second that, but I would like a better definition of that word. As, or because it, you know, it, it values time, time is money. So that needs to be, you know, more defined. But for this one, I will second it.
I think that's the, what we can work on through the process of relooking.
Yes.
Yes, yeah. And we need to, and we need to get that process done because it's not just Mr. Alderman, it's anyone that comes. And it's, it's a protection of our, our taxpayers.
So I'll, I'll, I'll come to you guys again at a work session with an updated policy. Um, we can try to hash out, but in the interim, do you want me to recommend a motion here?
Yes.
Recommend a motion.
Uh, I, I recommend a motion to waive the fees of uh Justin Alderman's November twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-four public records request for his requested items number three, which is a copy of our um public records retention policy and item number five of the database and file-based logs of Cook County meetings webpage system. Uh, and to charge our standard rate for the rest.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, managers report?
Uh, just a couple of quick things. First off, I think this is uh the first meeting we've had since um you pointed me as county manager. I just want to thank you again for the opportunity. Uh, I'm really excited to continue to work with our uh, our departments and the great staff we have here. Also really excited to get to work with our community going forward. So just thank you guys again for that opportunity. Um, I also wanted to note, um if you haven't had a chance to meet our new um senior GIS analyst, Ben Clark, he started last week.
What, his first name is Ben?
Yeah.
Okay, I missed the first name and so thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to, happy to coordinate an introduction.
Yeah, I'd love to be there.
Yeah, he's very, very nice gentleman.
Yeah, yeah. So happy to have him on board and, and fill that important hole for us. So uh, that's all I had for you guys this morning.
Uh, Suzy?
So basically, we signed individual letters for the Secure Rural Schools. And now I'm asking us as a county to send a letter to uh Cliff Benz in support of passing the Secure Rural School Plan. It's obviously very important in our, in our county. And this is just a reiteration of what we did individually because that's the way we could. And now this is just the same letter going on to Benz.
Yeah, and I think it's another really good, great, great thing about uh AOC because I was able to connect with the NICO representative there and talk to him about how important it was. He said that they were working nationwide, getting conservative or blue and red commissioners and representatives and people all across the board in the West to sign on to this because of how important this is for roads, schools, infrastructure.
Yes.
And I was even able to reach out to some of our neighboring counties and have them talk to their uh, US representatives as well about talking to the
Yes, if you have federal ground in your county, this is a necessity.
Better get it done because you're not getting any other money for it.
Yeah. So I don't know, I, I make a motion that we sign this and send this on to Cliff Benz.
I'll second it with that we sign it out of court and also that if you do it before I'm back on Friday, then uh use my stamp.
Okay. I have a motion to include Brian's suggestions.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? I got a couple. Uh, so somebody, uh, Calista, I can never say her last name. Uh, she went through something. She lives here in Cook County now. Songstead. Uh, she brought up to me that they have a thing in Deschutes County called Deschutes County College. And uh, set me up with a person in Deschutes County that uh, that puts that on. And I've talked to Will and Will and I are gonna do a little research, so more to come, but I think that might be a real good opportunity for the citizens of Cook County to hear more about our finance department. Uh, all the, 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 I guess the sheriffs already do theirs, but all the other the road department, the uh, I can just list them all off, juvenile, all these different departments. And, and I think uh when you're part of it, you understand how complicated and all the things that you have to do to move things forward. But I think if you're just as, you know, if you're just a citizen watching from the outside, a lot of times that can be uh, uh, lost on you. And so I think the, the more we can do uh, to, to share that with people, I think the, the better we can turn out. Um, so more to come as uh, as we get more information, but I think that could be a really good addition to the county. Uh, and then also uh I've been working with Will on uh, with, with public meetings uh being a very hot topic lately. Uh, we're working to put together best practices for board members in county uh uh, boards as well as something that we can share to uh boards throughout the county. It's really up to them if they want to do it or not, but uh, putting together some uh information and data of, of what current laws are and find a way to keep those current and keep those being shared with the, the citizens. So again, uh, it's a work in progress, progress, you know, we'll get something soon, but I think it's really important to make sure we put those people in the strongest position possible to be able to provide that. Brian, you got anything?
No, I'm good, Seth.
Okay, um any public comment before we uh wrap the meeting up? Come on up, please.
Morning Commissioners, uh, Justin Alderman, uh, managing editor at the Primeville Review. I did just want to make a brief comment in um uh, response to the uh decision on our public records request. I appreciate the county, uh, first off, uh, maybe considering reviewing its uh uh, procedures related to the public records. Uh, especially because I think it's become apparent uh that much of the time spent by even a county council uh cannot be uh recovered as part of the process with uh records requests. And it is a process that I will speak from my own experience as a journalist working across the state of Oregon, as well as even outside the state of Oregon, uh, is very abnormal. Um, so it's a process for considerations of uh fee waivers or reductions coming before a board of county commissioners. That also creates potential frustration under the public records law due to the timelines because you guys don't meet every day uh like county staff do. Um, I did want to make mention though, um that while there is an expense and burden that is on taxpayers, the requests made especially by members of the media are made to the benefit of those same taxpayers. And Oregon statute is in, in precedent has been very clear on the fact that setting a hardline approach that basically says due to the monetary factor, um, we're not going to consider fee waivers and take a hardline approach, I, I, I think maybe a bit misguided. Uh, further, I would question how many we waivers or fee reduction considerations the county as a whole has even made in this year. And to my knowledge from some of my own research, it appears that nobody has ever made these considerations. So it seems the county is very resistant uh, to making appropriate considerations of fee waivers, especially in light of the fact that no other media publications or citizens have conducted the kind of investigative journalism that we are to ensure transparency for members of the public. And especially in light of the situation, which I noticed was not really addressed today uh to the public. But has to do with an investigation into um admitted violations of the Oregon Public Meetings Law by the Natural Resource Advisory Committee. Um, and regardless of the sale of the property, I think there's still uh numerous interests. Now, county council also mentioned that our requests included uh search terms, including my own name, the Primeville Review. To clarify, I still believe those are uh for personal reasons by any um means, but they're, they're intent to seek documentation about how the county and its officials responded uh both to our public meetings grievances as well as our public records requests in itself. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody online? Okay, we will now leave a public, public session to executive session. Uh, board, the Board of County Commissioners will now meet in executive session under ORS one nine two six six zero two D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the government body to carry on labor negotiations. Representatives in news media and business staff shall not be allowed to attend the executive session. All members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives in news media are specifically directed not to report on any deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. None of the decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we opened it, we, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back in the room.
Uh, the Cook County Board of Commissioners will now leave executive session under ORS one nine two six six zero
Yeah.
two D conduct deliberations with persons designated by the government body to carry on labor negotiations. Representatives in news media and business staff shall be allowed to attend the executive sessions. Except for under two D, so not really. All of the members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives in news media are strictly directed should not report on any deliberations during the executive session except to state the subject of the subject previously announced. The decision may be made in this executive session. At the end of the executive session, return to open session, walk the audience back. Okay, Eric, do you have a motion for us?
Based on what I think I heard in the executive session, I might suggest uh a motion to authorize the negotiating team to present the county's proposal to the union as discussed in the executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, anything else before we turn the meeting? Anything, Eric?